Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, it's time for us to have.
Okay.
I just like this, you know.
Yeah.
Unless, I won't let you go. But Justin was a Russian.
Oh, yeah, he decided to.
I won't say five, but look, that's what I want.
Yeah. I think, I think the guys should get blazers and the women should get cardigans. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
All that's a women's thing, so yeah, same color.
Yeah, I just like, yeah, but you, a marine or whatever color woman.
Mm-hmm.
Man, looks more professional, you know?
It does, it does. I know Shalonda's here, Diane is here. I see Nicole is here. James is not. Let me add David, because his name is not on here. I see. Um, I've seen Halcomb. So is this here?
Yeah, I got it, and I got your report too.
I just want to make sure you're in the loop.
One of them. Harry that was up there with yesterday. You probably been known, he's been.
Oh, really?
Yeah. He was in.
Did you beat him?
Yeah.
Did you beat him?
Oh, no, he was in, uh, one two.
He gonna be like.
He was good, but anyway, he's thinking about running again.
He's who?
Yeah.
The March election special?
Well, he, he runs for that, let me tell you, he runs for that and then run for mayor again. That he's talking about.
Oh, yeah.
But he was here about three years.
Okay.
Running first. But they, they come sometime and the rest of them. Outlaws.
I'mma tell them you said that, Mr. Mears. I'mma tell them, and I come to meet y'all on Saturday.
I said, I'm sitting up here. I'm, I'm, I'm getting judged by my peers, I'm sitting up here with a gang outlaw. That's right. Birds of feather flock together, I guess.
Yes, sir. That's the Walking in Team Authority, okay.
You know, uh, does Rodney have the second screen and share it the entire time, or only when the presentation starts?
Only when the presentation starts.
Got you. Just from what I can see, city manager's report.
Uh-uh, no, we're gonna do work session first. Work session starts first, so with the work session, you're gonna go through the comp study. Come on. Okay, now. Uh-uh, I have black and white, I have.
Oh, give me this one right here, is it?
Thank you, well, I had that first, but I gave that to you. So, yeah, the first thing they're gonna do is as far as presentations.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if they have a pre, well, it says presentation, I don't have a presentation from them. But number five.
Number, oh.
Number five. And then number eight on work session. So, let's see.
Yes, yeah, number five.
Yeah, number five.
Number eight.
And number eight, so I'mma put a Peabody, so you can know.
Yeah, I'll send a bit of a fresh course.
And then for your, let me see, your regular session. And then you got the city manager's report. So, basically, after he do his city manager's report.
Yeah.
John.
John, immediately.
Immediately.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, what, work session number five.
Number eight.
And then number eight.
Okay.
And then regular session, city manager, and then John, yeah. So, here you go.
Walking Authority people have anything?
Yeah, I, I think they're just, um, because what I'm thinking is Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wells would be the one to talk about it, and then the kids would be there to add more if they need it.
That's not true.
Yeah.
Shelby, how you doing?
I'm the tiger.
I don't know what a cheetah. Hey, just saying, yeah.
Oh.
Have an orange. It's right underneath the classification.
Coming to. Well, he's coming. He's coming. Yeah, I, I overstand that. Only get that. Make sure my phone on, bye, bye. Turning up a little bit? It is six o'clock, so the work session for mayor and council for October twenty-first is called to order. Let's see, Ms. Rainey, can we have our roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Butler, council members and city manager, Mr. Clark. This is the roll call for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four work session meeting. Mayor Butler.
Present.
Councilmember James.
Present.
Councilmember Gutierrez. Councilmember Akins Wells.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mears.
Here.
Mayor Butler, you have a corn.
Excellent, thank you very much. The adoption of tonight's consent agenda. Is there any item that the council desires to add or remove from the consent agenda? All right, not hearing anything, is there a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda?
Don't move.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
That was Councilman Mears, is there any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells.
Yes.
Councilmember Mears.
Yes.
Thank you, now, as far of, as far as it pertains to the agenda, we, um, have a request to remove item seven. Which would be the council discussion on the City of Forest Park's financial policies. So is there a motion to accept tonight's agenda with the removal of item number seven?
Don't move.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez. Councilmember Akins Wells.
Yes.
Councilmember Mears.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Now, is there a motion to approve the items on tonight's consent agenda? No, that would be. Okay. Uh, new business, council discussion on a partnership with Clayton County, I'm sorry, Clayton State for continuing and professional education. Back on history, the executive offices seek approval for a strategic partnership between the City of Forest Park and Clayton State University's continuing and professional education program. This collaboration will provide targeted professional development of opportunities for our employees in key areas such as Microsoft Office, business writing, customer service, and professional etiquette. This initiative aligns with the operational efficiency pillar of the One Forest Park program, ensuring that our workforce remains skilled, competent, and equipped to serve the citizens of Forest Park effectively. Um, who is this one?
Me.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, ma'am, so governing body members, as we've really put forth a effort to ensure that we are really operating under that pillar of operational efficiency, which, as the mayor mentioned, aims to optimize our internal processes, improve service delivery, and enhance employee performance. One of the things that we've recognized is the inherent need for ongoing training and skill development amongst our workforce. And to that end, the executive officers, along with our, um, HR department and Director Chalonda Brown, have worked with the Clayton State University just to lay out a program foundation to ensure that our employees, especially our administrative employee, administrative staff positions, have the opportunity to sign up and go, go through this cohort provided by Clayton State University. The cost of this program is roughly seven thousand five hundred dollars, and it includes eighteen hours of training. For the first cohort, we're able to get up to twenty-five employees in. We're gonna make it mandatory for certain key positions, just to try to train our workforce where they are. In reviewing the exit interviews that have been conducted in the city, there is an inherent need to ensure that we brush up our workforce on computer skills, as well as just how to basically write a letter, just honing in on those skill sets. And since we're using more technology, um, for the city overall, we want to ensure also that our employees had the opportunity to go through additional training for Excel. Um, Director Brown worked with, um, Clayton State University, um, on this program, and I'll ask her if she has anything to add, just based upon the foundation that we presented to you.
Yeah. Basically, everything that this department on this stated is for, as we're trying to work with our employees to make sure that they are basically to let them know that we, um, value them and to basically get them, get their skill sets up. Um, so basically with this program that we have, um, established, it does, um, hone in on, um, Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, um, the writing skill, and customer service. The main thing is customer service. Um, we want to make sure that we are providing excellent customer service to internal customers as well as external customers.
Thank you, any questions or comments, Councilwoman James?
I'll just say, I think that's greatly needed, I, I saw on there, it says, uh, etiquette to professional etiquette. I think that's very important, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say, great job, um, Ms. Brown, that is, um, that is, anytime we can advance our education, it's, it's a great thing, so thank you for going out there and looking for that. Um, I look forward to being part of some of those things, yeah, can we be part of it?
Yes, sir, if we have enough space in the class, we could certainly add on, um.
Is that a big people joke, because of, because of me? Anyway, thank you, Ms. Brown.
It is, it was definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Reference to the size of the class.
Okay, let's move on, refi.
And at the end of the cohort, at the end of the cohort, um, we have an official graduation ceremony here in the chambers, just to recognize these individuals as a certificate would come directly from Clayton State University.
Councilwoman Wells?
No, thank you so much.
Councilman Mears?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the next item, council discussion on the presentation from Walking in Authority Team Council, background and history. The Walking in Authority Team Council, formerly the Forest Park Team Council, was founded in two thousand and eight by Mayor Pro temp Sparkle K. Adams, with a group of students from Forest Park, and became fully active in two thousand and nine. It was formed to engage teens ages thirteen to nineteen from high, from local schools, with elections held for positions like teen mayor, councilperson, city manager, and city attorney. Since then, the council has been involved, invol, been involved in various community activities, including cleanups, mock trials, voter registration drives, and leadership training. Sparkle Adams is present to provide an overview of the Walking in Authority Team Council. Good evening, Ms. Adams.
Good.
Great.
And as she said, my name is Sparkle, I have you for those who don't know me. I do want to, I'm gonna talk about Walking in Authority Team Council. Uh, we started here in Forest Park, but we got home. And the idea came because, as you see, it's mostly adults out here. And what we wanted to know was, how do the youth feel since they're gonna be our leaders of tomorrow? With that being said, I came up with the ingenious idea to have a team council. George and Minnesota Association called the new council. And this, right behind me, I have the president and the first, first vice president. They will come up to the best and give you all the pamphlets, and that's not all this. Oh, they have?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And so, the pamphlets reflect about for you, the reasons why the team should have a team council. It's been existing for a long time. We have proven ourselves. We currently have a memorandum of agreement with the city of Charlotte. And we serve as their county. But we have two that are funded to be Forest Park. Uh, their presence in Forest Park. So we want to serve as a county council. I will step back and let them speak for themselves.
So, mine is Julie Lee, I attend a big conference in twenty, at the Withoutmore, and I gratefully serve as president for Walking Authority Team Council. So, I know that you're wondering, what is Walking Authority Team Council, and why can, are we eligible to serve you? One of the things that we do is to engage in you. If you look at a lot of clubs, organizations within the community, Walking Authority just teaches us being able to compete in the leadership field. Our members will be here, they always show up and show out. For example, we have, the city, um, they're, um.
The city address.
Yeah, the city of address. Um, earlier, and a lot of us here, we showed up to yours and we. Uh, we just love volunteering, and we really want to serve the community. One of the things that I appreciate about Forest Park is you guys' diversity. Walking Authority touches into that as well. As you can see, we are diverse council. We promote diversity in thoughts, and diversity in race and ethnicity. We celebrate culture, and that is some things that Forest Park also celebrates. And we have a very long history. We extend across T C P S and Metro Atlanta, and we want to make sure that our presence is highly encouraged. Good evening, you all.
Good evening.
I'm here. As the first vice president of Walking Authority, and actually living Forest Park myself. Now, what Julie has mentioned to me is not only the great opportunity to occupy Walking Authority, the great skills that our team will learn, but I feel like a very great way of knowing that Walking Authority has truly served the perfect community. I have my own personal testimony. I have been with you, Sparkle, the Adams, for about four years now. And I personally have to myself felt dignity. When I was first born, I was very much an introvert. Um, I was very scared to talk and talk, so what I'm doing now, I would not imagine myself in a million years. Um, essentially, I learned what we stand for, which is leadership, empowerment, accountability, responsibility. I was really able to get better at our public speaking skills, and now of networking, how we do it. Nonetheless, all these teams here, they're going to be leaders when they get older. Some of them are going to be attorneys, others of them are going to be very professional engineers, that may even become presidents in the future. Nonetheless, with Walking Authority, it truly has a negative impact in our life. We've seen our school community, we've seen how some students, we've seen how some students may intake certain regulations if they are included. Nonetheless, with Walking Authority, no matter the wrong or rights on school, we only stand up for what is right. We are advocates, we are student advocates, and I'm passionate with that. So nonetheless, I truly believe that if you give us two chance to, um, individual, to be Forest Park, not only will individuals within, you know, Forest Park, but more teams within Forest Park High School, Forest Park Middle School, and any schools in the area will truly be able to face a significant impact with the help of Walking Authority. The one that I have been able to face during my time. The one that I have been able to face during my time here.
Thank you.
There are very elephant-headed teams in here, and I don't have to complain. We have now about 37 teams. We have about 36 that are very active. We have one that is on vacation. And with that being said, we continue to grow. We're starting off as Forest Park Team Counsel. So it's getting much better. I think you can say that you take them back. And so we have that for partners.
Of course. Thank you so much. And you know, I absolutely adore Walking in Authority. And I will say, I have attended several conferences out of state in which you guys not only represent Forest Park, you represent the community, and you guys have won some very prestigious awards as a result. And I know for my Leadership Clayton group, and I think pretty much all of that class ended up using Walking in Authority at some point for their projects. And so, I commend you wholeheartedly for all that you have done and for what you instill in our next generation. And they are absolutely, absolutely nothing short of remarkable. And you know, I adore each and every one of you. So thank you. But what exactly is your ask? I know use of the council chambers have come up, but what exactly is your ask?
We could meet the nation as by having a collective or at least 10,000 to covering that's the the National League of Cities Congressional Conference. We attend that every year. And I just don't have the money. And I have to be here. So if we can get support with that, as well as the use of holding them. As you see, each one of them, they have the blazer, the t-shirts, and that kind of stuff. I feed them every time we need. Of course, I won't feed them today. And they keep going to travel. But you know, those are some of the things.
Okay.
Mayor Butler?
Yes, sir.
Now that we have heard the ask, my recommendation would be, if we are going to do it, let staff work with, if it's consensus of this board, to do this instead of it just being a partnership by which we are providing money, which becomes a little bit more difficult. I would prefer consideration of us creating a council or endorsing the city council as part of the City of Forest Park. I think it'd just be easier because there was a line item for, before we collapsed all of the individual lines for the council persons. And I believe it was either youth in government, youth council, or something similar. But we bottle all of that into the respective events for each of the respective wards as one number. So we don't have that delineation anymore. So just some consideration there.
Okay. Councilwoman James?
I would just ask Attorney Magic Hardy, how does this work when it comes to a nonprofit organization?
So typically, there would be some type of service that the city is receiving. So they could hold meetings, and then whether that be participating, how they've participated in cleanup, keep college park, keep Forest Park, excuse me, beautiful. I know, I know, slip up. And as well as just community events, volunteering, like they did at the city. So we could come up with a memorandum of understanding, outlining exactly what the relationship would look like in exchange for the budgetary donation.
Mayor Butler, I wonder, just to piggyback off of that, would it be easier, and this is just for consideration of legal, if it was adopted by this board as the Forest Park Youth Council? I think that would
Right.
prevent a lot of those other barriers. Because we could then put into place a memorandum of understanding that this is a Forest Park city council, youth government, which is something that's also endorsed by the Georgia Municipal Association.
It's the same thing we do with the city of Marlin. Because we're walking in authority. So we serve as the youth council with respect to the youth that live in Marlin. And the rest of us, we supply and we work and help out with whatever they have. So we don't separate.
Are you able to provide us with a copy of the memorandum?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. You know I support you and.
No, that was extremely impressive. I always see y'all everywhere, Ms. Adams. What you've done is amazing. So just, yeah, you have. You have at our events. And I see them everywhere. I follow your pages on Instagram. And it fills me up with pride, you know, just to hear the young lady from Forest Park. I wouldn't be opposed to this. I just want to make sure that if it is, you know, that you, if we do make this our council, that maybe the Marlin Council is the Marlin Council, and then we have Forest Park Kids in our council because that's, you know, the money for Marlin. Perfect. Okay. I love it, though.
Councilwoman Wells?
Yes, that was going to be my question. Thank you, Ms. Adams, for being here. I actually ran into her when she was out working, and we had a discussion. And I know when I first got into office, the team council was a big thing. And of course, I'm all about the kids and our future. And not just what they can do for us, but what we can do for them as well. Because some of them can teach us how to be better leaders, just listening to them speak. So that means a lot. So I appreciate you all being here and giving the council a clear understanding of what it is that you all are asking for. My only question was, how many kids are actually, what Councilman Gutierrez stated, from Forest Park or went to Forest Park Middle and High School?
I think it's 10 from each school. And some schools bear better than others. It just depends on what the dealer.
Thank you. Councilman Mears?
I don't have any questions, but I think that I'm for whatever the council comes up with to offer with a program.
All right.
So we'll get with Ms. Adams sometime this week. Or Ms. Adams can send me that MOU. We can begin to look over it and present a framework to the governing body for consideration.
Thank you. Council discussion of the comprehensive classification analysis and compensation study. Yes, ma'am?
It was a part of the team council since he didn't tell anybody anything, and he was hiding over there when he was in the ninth grade.
Background and history. As part of the strategic objectives established during the fiscal year '23 budget cycle, the governing body endorsed a contract with Gallagher for an in-depth comprehensive classification analysis and compensation study. Our dedicated staff has engaged in close collaboration with a contractor to ensure that our wage and compensation framework is not only equitable, but also strategically designed to cultivate a more progressive approach to attracting and retaining exceptional talent within the City of Forest Park. We are now prepared to present the findings of this study for consideration by the governing body.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
As outlined in the background and history, the Human Resource Department, along with the collaboration with the city manager, have been working diligently for the past several months with Gallagher to conduct a comprehensive wage and compensation study. Tonight, we are pleased to have Ms. Beverly Moultrie, a representative from Gallagher, with us to present the final findings of the study. Ms. Moultrie will provide a detailed overview of the results, including key recommendations that address existing gaps, purpose, proposed adjustments to our current pay scale. These findings are crucial as they will guide our efforts to implement a compensation framework that is both sustainable and aligned with industry standards.
You know what? You just have to tell us the government.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for allowing me to present to you all this afternoon. Again, my name is Beverly Moultrie. And of course, I'm one of the representatives from Gallagher Benefit Services. Our particular practice contracted with the city for the study. I served as a project director, along with some project staff members that are not able to be here in person today. But I just wanted to let you know that it was definitely a team effort and just a very tight-knit collaboration with our team as well as the city. So for tonight, the things that I will go over, I have the table of content that is showing on the screen. I'll talk with you some about the study background. I'll also talk about the components of the study for which we evaluated and reviewed your classifications for the city, as well as your compensation or all of the pay structures within the city. We'll also talk about the recommendations from the study that affects your salary structure, as well as the implementation costs. And then finally, I will also talk about some of those recommendations and ongoing maintenance. Now for the study background. Again, we started this particular study earlier in the year. And at the time when we did, there was approximately about 265 employees that were involved in this particular study. This represented 78 different job titles across the city. We also worked with the city to begin to talk with the key stakeholders or those that had an integral part in making sure that this study was going to be a success. We wanted to make sure that there is clear understanding of what the purpose of this study was to do. And those things as outlined was one, to analyze the compensation or the pay of your classification systems, to also analyze both the internal and external equity across all city systems, and also to make those recommendations to your structures to ensure that what we were recommending and proposing would be competitive with each of the positions and labor market for which they fall into. So a little bit about the classification methodology and the results that we went through. First off, the basis for our study was founded on all of the job descriptions for identifying the analysis or working through the analysis for those classifications. Our collaboration with the city looked at the pay structure levels and the job documentation reviews. What that meant was, where there were questions or any uncertainty, we worked with the city officials to make sure that we understand what those jobs stood for before going out to the labor market. In addition to that, we also provided guidance in reviewing the Fair Labor Standards Act to ensure that those designations were proper and aligned with all of the regulatory laws and regulatory laws across not only state, but also federally. And what we found from the results were that there were five positions that we identified that needed further review. We're working with the city to make sure that those particular positions that we identified are sound. The city has given us the recommendation and made those appropriate changes. In addition to that, for on-call pay, we found that some of the policies was not necessarily consistent with the Fair Labor Standards Act for which we evaluated. Those changes are also being reviewed and adjustments made by the city. Gallagher also provided a recommendation to include more inclusive language in your job descriptions. And so what that means is, in alignment with the American Disability Act, we wanted to ensure that there was language that was included in all job descriptions so that when you go out to the market, you would be able to touch the widest or the broadest breadth of talent that is out there and attract them to the city. For the compensation portion of the study, we started with the data collection process. And in order to start with that, we had to identify the labor market for which we would collect data from. For this study, we use what we call published survey sources. And what that is, is that it is a collection of survey or data results that represents not only the private market, but also the public sector industries. We used, we looked at it from a local, regional, national, and geographical perspective for those labor markets. And on the screen, we have a listing of the various published survey sources that we use. And just to quickly outline those, we use Willis-Terris-Watson, Mercer Benchmark Studies, CompData, the Economic Research Institute, and Wage Access. And these are all reputable sources. To continue on with the data analysis process, we also looked at how would we do job matches? Gallagher adhered to the World at Work Compensation Guidelines, which basically says for every job that we look at, to make sure that there's a match, it had to be an 80% match. We also adhere to the Federal Trade Commission that says that we have to have five matches for every job that we were going to draw an analysis from. In addition to that, we also looked at aging your salary data. All of the data that we collect from all of the survey sources, as many of you know, they collect data or they provide data at different times of the year. We aged that data to a common date to make it effective as of July 1st. And we use the World at Work prevailing market trend of 5% per year for actual salaries and 2% for your salary structures. In addition to that, we conducted a outlier analysis, which means that any data point that we had that did not meet the job matching criteria or that was considered an outlier based off of the analysis that we found, we did not include it in the study. We wanted to make sure that everything that we did collect aligned. We also looked at some geographical adjustments. So for the study, we actually adjusted all of the data that was collected to the cost of labor for the City of Forest Park area. And we used the Economic Research Institute to help provide that guidance. What that means is for the cost of labor is that it refers to the difference in pay in the labor market for each of the jobs versus the cost of living, which fluctuates throughout various areas. But the cost of labor is the true cost of what it would cost the city to employ or to hire someone for those positions. Now, to represent our findings, we use, excuse me, we utilize some guidelines for which to go by. And on the screen, you'll see four different categories. They're color-coded. Highly competitive, competitive, possibly misaligned, and significantly misaligned. And as you notice, there's percentages below those. Throughout the rest of the slides, you'll see that there is color coding that represents that. What this means for the study is this. When something is highly competitive, that says that it falls within plus or minus 5% of the results that we collected. Being competitive, which is still very good, the data would fall plus or minus 10%. Now, there's a possible misalignment when we get to things that are above 11% to 15%, and definitely significantly misaligned when it is above plus or minus 15%. One component to remember when we're looking at anything that could be either possibly or significantly misaligned is that there is more that needs to be factored in that goes into these numbers than just looking at the pure numbers. So for an example, we have to consider factors such as performance, turnover, longevity, and things of that nature to ensure that the data that we collected, that there's no other bona fide reason for why the data is represented the way that it is. And so we applied those factors as we analyzed and assessed your data. Now, this slide actually shows the market results. So overall, for Forest Park, what we found that the current base salaries were 2.6% above the 50th percentile of the market. What that means is that the salaries are here at the city overall are highly competitive. And when I say the 50th percentile of the market, that is on the screen, that's the column that is shaded in green that shows actual base salaries. And of course, some of the numbers are slightly rounded there. You will also see that at the 75th percentile, I know I always get lots of questions about that, the salaries are 14.2% below the 75th percentile. So I'm going to pause and explain that to you a little bit. When we have salaries that are that percentage below the 75th, again, that's not a bad thing because the city expires to be competitive with the market. At the 75th of the market, that says 25% of the pay for which we collected is above market median. Market median is the 50th percentile. 25% of those salaries above are above the 50. That's what the 75th means. But collectively, all of the salaries overall for the city is considered highly competitive. In regards to your pay scales or those salary ranges, what we have found is that your salary ranges are actually not consistent with the market because of all the increases that have been adjusted and all of the. because of all the increases that have been adjusted and all of the good work that has been done to advance your pay structures. The city is actually above the market. And so as you see there, in orange where it says 17.3% is a positive, meaning above the market. At the midpoint or the middle of the range for the market, you're 13% above. And at the maximum, you're 11.7% above. That just says that you have healthy ranges and it allows for great movement. So as you're progressing in your careers or through your range, there's enough room for movement in those ranges. So all of this is very good. And when we looked at, of course, when we further looked at the results of the market, we did some deeper dive, excuse me, analysis because overall, when I mentioned that the salaries were highly competitive, of course, that's overall. But when we get down to the individual position, positions, there are few salaries, are few positions that are paid, that are not paid in alignment with the market. And what we're recommending that those particular jobs under the general workforce, where we have general workforce employees and public safety, that the city takes an opportunity to look at those further because those are ones that over time, you'll need some additional adjustments. So now to our recommendations and our implementation strategy. We looked at in employing our recommendations in the salary, in those strategies, we wanted to make sure that all of the frameworks and policies that were being proposed were actually equitable. They allowed for growth. They definitely were designed to be able to attract talent and to retain your current talent that you have. And so in developing those, we wanted to make sure that no pay cuts will occur. So that's never a part of our recommendations. Also that, once the city looks at our proposals, that they implement, excuse me, they implement the processes so that all employees are paid within the ranges. And in addition to that, we also applied a 2% per year increase for time in seat. What that means is for every year that you are in a particular position, your current position, we also applied a 2% factor to advance you through those ranges. So you got credit for your current, your current role and the amount of time that you're in those roles. So for recommendation number one, we recommend that you adjust the pay structures for your general employees, fire and police to align with the living wage for your area, which is Clayton County, here in Clayton County, Georgia. And that living wage rate that these scales are based off of is for, really for a single person, one adult. And that minimum is set at $23.46 per hour. So what that means is that when you look at your pay scales, the lowest pay scale should start out with a minimum starting rate at $23.46. From there, all of the other ranges then builds off of that $23.46 per hour. We also went through and we smoothed the progressions between the grades. And what that means is we wanted to ensure that for those grades, that there was adequate gap between each of the grades so that there's no overlap and also to help to mitigate possible compression. So we smoothed them out to ensure that that was not the case. And in addition to that, we also increased the range spread to allow for increased growth. In the structure also, for your general wage employees, we eliminated the grade 1, 101. And the reason for that is because there was not significant difference between 101 and 102. So we combined those and we made recommendations for those incorporating the 20, in incorporating the $23.46 per hour scale. For recommendation number two, we recommend that you adjust the base pay for employees whose current pay is below the minimum of whatever proposed salary structure that they're in, bringing them up to the minimum of those grades. And in addition to that, adjust employee salaries based off of their use of service in their current position. Now, displayed on the screen is one of the examples of the proposed pay structure. This particular structure is for the general workforce. And as you can see, the, we have the minimum starting rate there in, on an annualized basis that starts at $48,797 for pay grade 102. And of course, it progresses further. The middle, the middle in green represents the hourly rate. And of course, the three latter columns represents the points that I made early, earlier about smoothing out those midpoint progressions and the gap between the ranges. And again, this is all built off of the perspective of allowing for future growth in those ranges. The second, the second scale here is for fire and it's built off of the same, the same components. Of course, recognizing, recognizing that fire, the hourly rate and the number of hours that they work per week differs from the general workforce. So those changes or those differences have been represented in their scale. So this is the scale for them. And again, all of this is based off of, again, the living wage for Clayton County. And then finally, the scale for police. Now to the implementation costs. Once we did all the analysis and we made the recommendations on where we believe people should be, we came up with two implementation options. In the blue, which is on the left, is the, is the amount and number of employees that would need to be moved up to the minimum of the range. We have brought in all of the scales with the total being at the bottom. I'm going to speak from the bottom, which is the total. So based on this, on this chart, to bring everyone to the minimum of the range, it's going to cost the city about 1.9 million, $1.9 million, which represents about 146 individuals that would need an increase just to bring to the minimum. And remember, this minimum and this cost is represented of going to the new cost of living rate of $23.46 per hour.
Just so that we are clear with what that means, so that we don't have parity issues and compression issues, what she's saying is if we are adjusting the minimum salary in the City of Forest Park, which is currently $17 a hour and we're moving to, I believe it was 23.46.
It is.
Ensure that everybody moves along on the scale appropriately, that is the number. Just want to make certain that it's clear that it's not taking people to the minimum of their pay ranges, making certain that they are aligned with us increasing what the bottom, what the 102 is on the scale.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Clark. So moving. In addition to that, the section in green on the right, that represents the cost when we're looking at time and position. So remember earlier, I mentioned that we also calculated the same concept of bringing everyone to the minimum, but in addition to that, giving them an additional 2% increase for every, for every year that they have in their current position. If you look to the bottom there, under the total for time and position, the amount that it would take to move everyone to the time and position rate is $387,000, which means 99, 99 individuals would need a time and seat adjustment. So collectively, first off, we've got to get everyone to the minimum. And then if they, if, for those that need the time and seat adjustment, then we would apply the additional 300, apply that to the additional 99 individuals who would need an adjustment. So moving forward again with the recommendations, we're recommending that also that there is a revision to modernize your pay policies and practices. And this also helps to promote best practices and it also supports your retention and ability to recruit. Also, annually, we want, we are recommending that you review the market trends to adjust your salary structures and also using a trend factor. So what that means is every year, when you're looking, thinking about increases, there is, there is a process or study that Gallagher collects it, be able to advise how much the market is moving in a particular area. So how much, how much of wage, how much is being applied for wages? And how much is being applied for your structures? And that recommendation is whatever your increase to pay is, that you should be able to move, should move your salary structures half the amount to continue to be in alignment. And we are also recommending that every three to five years that the city undergoes a complete structure to ensure that nothing has changed and that you stay competitive with the marketplace. Just a few items for the pay administration guidelines. Again, we recommend that pay administration guidelines are in place for moving how you to, to identify, how people are moving through the structure. Also, taking an annual review for, to ensure alignment, for internal alignment as jobs change and as you're continuing to move between levels. In addition to that, we're, we're also recommending that individual salary advancement or base pay increase, that they should be, those, they should be based off of some competent performance measure within those classes. And that, excuse me, and that individual salaries should increase at a rate greater than the salary range adjustment. So in this example, I show that the salary rate, if the salary ranges are 2% for 2025, that basically employee pay should be higher than that, higher than 2% to again, making sure that there's, that everything stays in place, that there's adequate movement. And as, as employees' pay increases, the ranges should increase so that it shows movement and that the city is not behind. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman James?
Thank you, Ms. Beverly. It's great, great information and I'm fired up, ready to go. I hope our young people from Walking in Authority was paying close, close attention to understand that working from government, you can start off with 23 plus an hour with great benefits. So please look to starting out in government. But thank you so much for this and I'm excited about this for our employees.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gutierrez?
Yeah, just thank you for all the work. I know it takes a lot. It's not just that presentation and coming up and you're talking. Thank you to the Human Resource Department and Ricky and all the staff for putting this together. I'm excited, you know, for our employees to get this.
Councilwoman Wells?
Yes, thank you so much. I'm too excited for our employees. It's been a long time coming. And they deserve to have competitive pay. So thank you for all of the hard work. And you, Mr. Clark, for pushing the initiative.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mears?
So Mayor Butler, before we move on, because this is on the regular session agenda as an action item, we need some direction from the governing body. And so what you heard tonight is a presentation of implementation. As all of you know, this has been something that we've discussed. And your first presentation was at the Strategic Planning Retreat. But staff just needs to know, what is the recommendation moving forward? Is this something that the governing body would be looking to consider January 1? As far as implementing all of this, is it waiting until the next budget cycle, which will be July 1 next year? We just need some strategic direction as to how you want to move. And then subsequent to that, based upon the recommendation and the 1.9 million dollars and the additional $400,000, I believe, for the 2% step increases, we just want some general dialogue so that moving from this point, we are continuing to work in the background of figuring everything out relative to individual employees based upon the information that Ms. Beverly and her team has provided to get us prepared for implementation next year.
What did you say about the 2.5%?
Yes, 2%, and that's relative to the.
On the seat.
Matrix for days in seats, years in seat, I'm sorry, within that position.
I had a question. The on-call, on-call pay, excuse me, is not consistent with FLSA, the Fair Labor Standards Act. How does that impact the numbers to bring it into? I guess more in unison with the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Yes, ma'am. It does not impact the numbers. It's more so the policy, just to ensure that your policy is in alignment. So moving forward, as you employ your, your, your on-call pay, you're just ensuring that you're paying people appropriately based off, based off of their FLSA status.
Okay. Thank you. And so what's it be? No, well, you can go ahead. So with the, the implementation, January 1st or July 1st? I don't know if this is a finance question. What would be your recommendation?
They would have to consult with city manager. And so I think, I think where Mayor Butler was going with that question was what would be the source of funds for implementation? We couldn't take action tonight and say, we're going to implement this next week because there's just too much work. When we did this study, we were very intentional, both Shaylon, I'm sorry, Director Brown and I, to ensure that we did not look at individuals. It was never about individuals. It was about a number of a pay grade and salary. So for us, we would need to loop in finance. I think we've identified that potentially we can leverage our performance since those have to be obligated by December 31st of this year. And then subsequent to that, you'll, you'll have to remember that that $1 million number is annually. And so if we're implementing this in January, we would only pay 50% of that number. And it would be lower than that just based upon attrition, based upon employees leaving, et cetera. Unless, Ms. Beverly, I'm thinking about it wrong.
No, you're correct.
So, Madam Mayor?
Sorry, Councilwoman Wells had a question.
No, I, that was actually what I was going to say because they waited a long time. And I know staff has to do their job, but I would hope it can be done before January. That was, that was my thing.
And one of the things that we found, and I'm sure Ms. Beverly never wanted me to call her again, when we started trying to isolate some of these numbers, it went back to some of the equity discussions that we've had. You know, relative to things being added on, on salaries on the beginning and it just carrying over and us not being able to pull out those numbers, the incentives that we offer upon hire for especially public safety. Well, we were not able to initial, we just had some different thoughts, just to ensure that in everything that we did, it was equitable. We would want to implement it, whatever the pleasure of this board is, we can make it happen. But it can't happen in two weeks, only because there's more backend work that we have to do to get the personnel action forms done, get this information loaded into our system. I mean, we could shoot for December if it's the pleasure of this board, but that's pushing it. I would have to lean on Director Brown to see how long, because we're not done. The numbers we're done with. There's still some more work in the background that Ms. Beverly needs to handle with her team to present to us the final. But we don't feel the numbers will go up. We feel the numbers, if anything, will come down. So we felt comfortable just bringing forth this presentation to get some strategic direction, getting the granting of approval, if that's what this board wants to do, and then the timeline. But we can do it. It's just, there's still a small amount of work. Ms. Beverly, how long would you say we are from having the final product by name and individual employee?
I would say two, two weeks because we would just clean up everything. We actually have, we've identified what those numbers are. And so we'll just confirm with the city one more time to make sure that those things are solid as well as provide those tools that we had talked about in terms of the placement for moving forward and how that would be done.
So Councilwoman Akins, well, to your point, if we're at two weeks, that puts us roughly into mid-November, which is right upon our Thanksgiving holidays. And I'm not sure how long it would take staff to get all of this circulated and into the ADP system, Director Brown.
Well, I know two weeks was like this kind of pushing it. But I think it will be something good for them to have before the holidays, before Christmas.
Councilwoman James?
So I was going to say, to piggyback on what you all are saying, I definitely agree. We need to try to do this and implement it as soon as possible. And if we're not able to, or if staff is not able to get, well, let me, let me back up. I do recommend the, the bring, bring to the minimum, which is the 1.095653, and the 387 time and position to be implemented. And then, of course, my recommendation would be as soon as possible, whatever that as soon as possible means to you all as far as staff is concerned. But I would also say that if it's not able to be implemented before the year is out, that we consider doing a Christmas bonus for every, every staff member. If we can't get it implemented before they. it implemented before the end of the year.
Okay, repeat what you stated, you, the January first or sooner, and then the?
Bring it to minimum.
Bring to minimum.
Time and position.
Okay.
What's the total number of employees that we have? Director Brown, could you please approach, ma'am? As it relates to timing and the work on the backend, how long do you feel it would take us to get everything in the system, us to do some checks, just to make certain that all the information correct, or circulate all of the personnel action forms? I would suppose we would need to have another meeting with staff just to go over, you know, this is how we came up with the numbers, have Ms. Beverly come down one final time, since she likes visiting Forest Park. Could we make a December first date, or could we make a December first date?
If not December first, December fifteenth date.
In time for the holidays?
Yes, in time for the holidays.
So we could set a goal to make it in time for the holidays?
Yes.
That's the pleasure of this board? Now, as it relates to a potential Christmas bonus, what's the total number of employees that we have, two hundred and eighty?
Two hundred and eighty plus.
Two hundred and eighty plus. And I'm not sure if the city has ever done a Christmas bonus?
We have.
And at what amount would you be willing to?
Well, that was in lieu of, that recommendation for me was in lieu of if we're not able to get it done before the end of the year. So if you, if you all feel like you all can get it done by December the fifteenth, then now that's a Christmas bonus in itself.
You know, the only difference is if you're speaking of a Christmas bonus, that's a one-time payment in addition to your salary. The increase is just going to be over a one-week period. It's not even the same. A Christmas bonus would be, would be much more significant to the employees. If you implement this, let's just say we get it before Christmas, the increase on their individual check is not, is something amazing, but it's not going to yield the same number as that Christmas bonus, just to be fair to the employees. So if we have two hundred and eighty employees, and we consider a five thousand dollar?
I mean, I'm all for the employees and money, but good. I think he need to recuse himself.
The simple math, if we went two hundred and eighty employees at five hundred dollars, that's a hundred and forty thousand. If we went two hundred and eighty times one thousand, that's a total of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and my recommendation would be that if we are going to consider that, that we do it now, because we would have to earmark ARPA funds, which will be the source of funding for this initiative by December thirty-first, if that is the desire of this council.
I think a thousand dollars is good for a Christmas bonus.
So I, um, absolutely. You know, it'd always go higher. Now, Ms. Brown, I, I understand the desire to have this, the pay portion done as quickly as possible, but I would want it done accurately. And so how realistic is it to have it done right the first time to meet that holiday deadline?
With my staff, we, I have one employee that does payroll, and so we have all hands on deck to make sure that everything, even myself, make sure that the information is accurate before we actually, you know, put it through ADP. So just go over it, you know, multiple times just to ensure, but we have all hands on deck just to make sure that it's done for all employees.
Since we are doing the Christmas bonuses, was January first something more?
Yes, if you do the, that'll give us more time, so it's.
Yeah, I would say because the holidays are coming up, we got, and I think staff is preparing a holiday thing for the, for the employees, it's a lot, so.
Well, I think if you're considering the thousand dollar bonus, that's going to be more than anybody's increase, based upon implementing this on December fifteenth for a Christmas bonus. It's going to be way more. And at a thousand dollars, I would just need to, if our finance team can approach.
While they are approaching, I would just say, because it was stated that it could be done in two weeks. So because if we say, if we agree to January the first, to not just wait and not work on it, but to start working on it, and if it can be completed before then, then that would be good.
Could we leverage ARPA funds? Or I guess the first question is, what's the remaining balance on unobligated ARPA funds?
Right now, we would, what we have left out to pay, about two, two point one. So we would have to go back and see and go through the list of what we have obligated to make sure that we can, we can do a bonus, or we can do that half a year going forward for the, the adjustments for salary.
So we would, if the governing body was considering this, we would just need to ratify action relative to a holiday bonus in the amount of X from ARPA funds to give us time to look within our ARPA budget to appropriate said funds, if a thousand dollars is the number that this governing body wants to do. And then subsequent to that, we will make certain that all of the work, because we're going to start as soon as Ms. Beverly provides us with the final report, also with the job description, we make certain that by January one, we're ready to rock and roll, even though they wouldn't receive the first increase until that second week, because for the first week, they would be paid for that final week of December, hours worked, I think, right? Director Brown? Yeah.
And one final question I have, would the full-time and part-time employees receive the same bonus, or would, I know in, in the past, we, the full-time received a certain amount and the part-time received a certain amount.
My recommendation would be that they are two separate amounts. And for the part-time employees, they would have to be employed at the time of the bonus. And then furthermore, my recommendation would be that we look into a time period to which we award those bonuses to employees that were here at a said timeframe. I don't think it's fair for an employee to join this city a week before this bonus, bonus is given out and then get rewarded. So I would just prefer that we set a timeframe, whether it's you had to be hired prior to October first or October twenty-first, whatever that looks like, just so that every employee, all of the new employees are getting the same benefit of our employees that have shown their dedication, just to be fair.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
And so Mayor Butler, just so that we are clear, for consideration at the regular meeting, we're, we're discussing or ratifying action relative to a thousand dollar Christmas bonus and implementation of the wage and compensation study to include bringing the minimum wage of this city to twenty-three dollars and forty-six cent, I believe was the number.
It is.
Which would be a historic moment for this community, as I believe we would have the highest minimum wage. And then subsequent to that, the consideration of the two percent per year time and position, approximately three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, that would affect ninety-nine employees.
Oh, we did the bring for minimum? Okay. And the holiday pay, that's going to be an additional item we're going to add?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And on behalf of the employees, Mayor Council, just for this governing body to consider a Christmas employee, a Christmas bonus, I, I take privilege in thanking all of you on behalf of north of two hundred and eighty employees that work tirelessly on behalf of each of you.
Is he considered an employee? Because I think he, we need, we need to go into executive session.
Item six, council discussion to extend the contractual agreement for on. Council discussion to extend the contractual agreements for on-call plumbing repairs and maintenance services. Background and history, the Department of Public Works is requesting council's approval to extend the contractual agreements with the following two plumbing repair and maintenance contractors. The first is Max Air Mechanical, and the second being the Plumbing Shop Inc. Doing Business Ask Quick Action Plumbers. These contractors have been providing on-call plumbing repairs and maintenance services to the city supplementing the Public Works Department staff. The initial contract term was for three years, and after reviewing the performance of both, both firms, the department is recommending a two-year extension to continue utilizing their services. The extension will allow these contractors to remain on and as needed on-call basis to perform specific plumbing-related task orders. The Department of Public Works will maintain the option to rotate the firms or allow them to compete for various projects throughout the city of Forest Park, including services for the city's different boards.
Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, and City Manager Clark. Procurement has before you, we want to take the initiative to go ahead and extend this contract, it's on an on-call as needed basis, and it's good to have these type of contracts in place for like emergencies with plumbing issues and things of that nature. The contract was awarded in twenty twenty-one for a three-year term, and that the contract term also states that a two-year extension can be awarded as well, so we're asking for that two-year extension.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman James? Councilwoman Gutierrez? Councilwoman Wells?
Yes, do we know how, how much we've paid out to these contractors and how often they are needed? My only recommendation is that, because we do have a maintenance department, that maybe we hire people with, you know, the plumbing experience, so that we don't have to keep contracting everything and we can complete it in-house. Not saying that I'm opposed, I just want to know what we, what we are paying for them, and would it be easier if we just hire someone that's qualified to do that, those things?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So we do do a lot of the plumbing in-house, the minor stuff, but the stuff that needs permits and the major jobs, we do contract them out with these two on-call companies.
Mayor Butler, just an inquiry, has this city ever done this particular work, this magnitude, in-house, through the building and maintenance department?
We have. But the problem is, we have a lot of aging infrastructure that requires more extensive work.
Is there a clause? I know there was conversation from legal relative to this being two-year, because if we're able to get the disciplines on our team, it would, of course, be cheaper.
Right, so it has to be a year-to-year contract. I know it previously was three years, but state law requires it to be year-to-year. It can be subject to automatic renewal, so you could do one year with an automatic renewal of another year, or you could just approve it for one year.
I got a question. So since we have two companies, so how, does we kind of, do they bid on like a, a fix, or is it just kind of you take turns back and forth?
So two things, we do take turns back and forth, but if it's a major contract, we have them bid against each other.
Okay.
And just to let you know, if you having a, a licensed contractor, I mean, the salary would be upwards of eighty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
That's why I was asking, do we have any idea of what we've already paid them, like within these three years?
I can get those numbers to you. Welcome.
Councilman Mears?
And we'll try to get those numbers for you prior to this item being ratified. If staff can just pull annual report for these two vendors, we'll see what that number is.
It's going to be one year? You said it's?
Not two years?
If you want to do the, the two years, it would need to be, excuse me, a motion to approve, sorry, for one year, subject to an automatic renewal of a one year. So total term, two years, however, it would be, each year would be one to one, essentially.
Yeah, I'd feel more comfortable with one year.
Okay, yeah, either, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to y'all. You don't have to do an automatic renewal, you can just do the, you can just do the one year.
Mayor Butler, if you would like, we can suspend the work session agenda and add this presentation to the regular meeting, as there is no action that's coming from this presentation from Kimberly Horn on the pedestrian bridge.
Okay, so, so is there a motion to move item eight, the discussion on the presentation on the pedestrian bridge to the regular meeting?
A move.
That was Councilwoman Wells, is there a second? That was Councilwoman Gutierrez, is there any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
That's Councilwoman Wells. All right, all in favor?
Uh.
Thank you. All right, we will, five-minute break. All right, good evening once again, everyone.
Good evening.
It is seven sixteen, so the regular session for mayor and council is called the order. Tonight's invocation will be done by Elder Cook from Rock Church. So all those who are able to stand, please do so, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor, point of order, before he starts, this lady in the back brought me a sweet potato pie, and we need to find that before, before I cause a riot.
Somebody smashed it up. Oh, oh, you found it?
Amen, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight, just thank you again, Lord, for your presence, Father God, we thank for the breath that's in our body, God, and even giving us the strength and even the will to come tonight, Father God, and talk concerning the business of this city, Father. We thank for every leader that you place in authority, that will lift the mayor, the council, Father God, and the city manager to you now. Father, pray that you continue to give us wisdom, God, on how to help us align ourselves with the blessings, Father God. We thank you for what's taking place in this city, Father God, and even the things that are to come, Father. So we welcome your wisdom, God, we thank you for your presence, Father God, and as a city, God, we just continue to stand in agreement, Father God, with the things that come forth in this city, Father God. Let us continue to pray for our leaders, God, let us continue to do our parts, Father God, to make this place a, the best place that it can be, Father God. So we just commit this meeting to you, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Flag in the states of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Ms. Rainey, roll call, please.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor Butler, City Manager Mr. Clark and councilmembers. This is the roll call for the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four regular session. Mayor Butler?
Present.
Councilmember James?
Present.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Akins Wells?
Here.
Councilmember Mears?
Here.
Mayor Butler, you have a call.
All right, thank you. All right, tonight's consent agenda, once again, is there anything that the governing body desires to add or remove from the consent agenda?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you, is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Wait, we're not there yet.
Oh.
Yeah, that's further down. The adoption of, oh wait.
I'm sorry.
Hector's, Councilwoman Gutierrez is just, is very funny. All right, so we had a motion on tonight's consent agenda, Ms. Rainey, roll call, please.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
All right, now tonight's agenda is that we are going to remove item eight, which was the approval on the Forest Park financial policies. And we are going to add the presentation from, for the pedestrian study, we want to add that as item three under the presentations. And then we're also going to add the holiday pay consideration. Yes.
Under new business number five.
That's approval.
Yep, ma'am.
All right, so is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with said recommendations?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
That was Councilmember Mears, is there any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, the minutes from October seventh. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? And if so, are there any changes to be recommended? Not hearing any, is there a motion to group said minutes together and approve as-is?
Move.
That was Councilwoman Wells, is there a second?
I'll second.
That was Councilwoman James, is there any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, next we have our public comments. And Ms. Rainey, could you read the disclaimer, please?
Yes. Per the charter section two dash one dash seven rules of procedure and decorum, comments will be limited to a total of three minutes per speaker. Twenty-one minutes are allotted in total. Members of the public are not to, are not allowed to participate in any debate or discussion conducted by the governing body members. All public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over which the governing body has jurisdiction. Each speaker must maintain a decorum, decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon members of the governing body or employees, sounding and using obscene language. All questions and comments shall be directed to the presiding officer, and members of the governing body may respond to the comments during their closing comments if they desire.
Thank you very much, and we have three. And we will start with Mr. Carl Evans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As someone that was incredibly blessed to be part of the home program, to be a recipient of that, those funds, I just want to thank everyone involved. The, I had a lot of problems with contractors, I don't think they're being properly vetted, but I'll say one thing, the contractor that I had, A and D Horizons that did my porch, I have the best-built porch in this, probably in the state. And I would tell you right now, I, like I said, I could take the rails off that thing and drive my truck on it, it would not go anywhere. So they, she admitted to me that they went in the whole building, the thing, for me, because the price of materials has gone up so much because of the hurricanes and everything. So, but they did, they went above and beyond, and I'm just so incredibly appreciative for the opportunity to, to get that done. And I get, I guess the city manager is gonna have to come out and next spring and help me paint the thing, so it'll be the prettiest one in, in the city. But I thank y'all again for what you did, for all of us legacy residents, and look forward to some other people being able to use those funds and, and to beautify this city even further. And as a former vice president, I want to recommend that the, we work out something with the, with the team council, because Councilwoman Wells and I have got about a million hours invested in these, in this program. It, we spent a lot of time through the years working on this, but I was honored to be a vice president of the program for, for a while, and wish I was still active, but it, but it is a great program, and they have always made us proud, even that one sitting over there slumped down behind where you can't see him. But David is, was, did a great job for us as well, so just want to, hopefully we can be able to work out something. Thank y'all.
Ms. Joyce, is it Burnett?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilwoman Mayor and Clerk and everyone else here. I see some familiar faces, and I want to say, I am grateful to have the pleasure of meeting our city manager at my house, as well as the counselor, not Councilman, Mears, and Street Boy, all came to my house Friday because I was kind of irate, but I got solutions. I am one of the residents, I've been in Forest Park for many years, but I've lived on Ash Street now for fourteen. Ash Street is a very busy street, but I feel like it's being neglected as far as repairs to the street, as well as to the actual sidewalks. Thanks to Mr. Clark and Councilman Mears, they've committed to fix the sidewalk in front of my house, starting by the end of November, thanks to your funds. So thank you so much, and I appreciate y'all's quick response to getting out to my house, because I work, when I work, y'all hear, and I can't get a voice. But I got a voice because I've just gotten out of the hospital, and I thank y'all so much for using your time to come to hear my cry. And please consider fixing the streets. I know y'all's police cars had to be repaired frequently from being out of alignment, for hitting the potholes on Ash Street from this side to Marrow Road. If you haven't been down it, try it, you'll be visiting your mechanic. So thank y'all again so much, please visit the street, and let's get some repairs, please, Councilman, thank y'all so much.
Elder Cook.
Good evening again, everyone, I'm Elder Cook, representing the Forest Park Ministers' Association, just with a blessing upon each person here. We just want to invite you again, this Saturday is gonna be our Living Legends banquet. You guys want to come out and celebrate some of the living legends we have here in the city? If you're looking for a reason to pull that dress out, or to shine those shoes, or try that new look, this Saturday will be that opportunity, it's gonna be right here at Paradise Gym, six o'clock on Saturday. If you need more details, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. City managers report.
Yes, Mayor and Council, first, again, it's been a great month. On behalf of the executive offices and our Chief of Staff, Ms. Warrior, we commend all of those that have applied for the home program. To date, we've had sixty-six applicants approved, so we are at forty-two or sixty-four percent of the sixty-six approved residents have either completed the work or in the process of arranging repair dates. And Mayor and Council, we are happy to announce that we've made the decision to relaunch this program to all residents at a date soon. Of course, we're going to do an unveil similar to what we did last year, but we're looking forward to releasing this so that all of the residents, absent those legacy residents that the portal has already been open for, all of the residents have the opportunity to apply for said funds. Of course, this next round will run up until the end of the year because of the obligation of ARPA funds, but we're just excited that the governing body had the foresight to appropriate one-point-three million dollars just to make this happen. I'm going to be brief in the city manager's report tonight, but just for the month of September, one of the things that we wanted to highlight to you was, we had the opportunity to take nearly close to one-hundred employees to the Atlanta United Soccer Game. This exhilarating outing not only fostered team spirit, but also, Mr. David, but also strengthened community bonds, allowing our staff to enjoy a evening just together. We're having some technical difficulties tonight, but I'll conclude the city manager's report there and email it out to you, because it's not coming up on the screen.
All right, present, patience. Our financial reporting of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five monthly financial report, background and history, the finance department is presenting the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five monthly financial review of the city's financials. The monthly financial review aims to help us understand how healthy the city's cash flow is and evaluate department performance to see if the executive office needs to reallocate resources to achieve the city's financial goals. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager Clark, Jeremy Patterson, Deputy Director of the Department of Finance, pleasure speaking with you all this evening. But just a brief report tonight, prepared by Director John Wiggins. Next slide. Next slide. And we're gonna update our templates. That's not us.
Oh, that's your report.
Oh, that's the city manager's report.
Oh, yeah.
What you said?
He shouldn't have gave it to you.
Right there, yeah, that's it.
Mr. Clark?
You can go down to slide five, I'm looking at it right there. Never mind, I can speak from what I have. Just an overview of, let's say, budget to actuals. Currently, our remaining fund balance is sixteen million, two-hundred-seventy-thousand, seven-hundred-sixteen dollars. Our year-to-date financial report, as far as actual expenses, eight, eight million, seven-hundred-seventy-two dollars and, eight million, seven-hundred-seventy-two dollars, eight-hundred-thirty-six dollars. For the month of September, that total was two million, one-hundred-twenty-five-thousand, nine-hundred-twenty-eight dollars. Basically saying, the expenses that are budgeted are total year-to-date, or the balance is thirty-three million, one-hundred-twenty-one dollars. Excuse me, thirty-three million, one-hundred-twenty-one thousand, sixty-one dollars. Regarding departments, there we go. I don't know if that's up to date. Regarding departments, all departments from legislative down to emergency management services are operating within the actual budgets. I won't say outliers, but police, E-nine-one-one, parks and rec, operating at twenty-seven percent of the budget. Nothing out of the norm, because there have been purchases and things like that. However, we've spoken to departments to make sure that they are within. Overall, city budget is operating at twenty-one percent of what was actually budgeted as far as expenses to revenues. That's pretty much it without the slides. There's no graphs that I will be able to actually explain to you, but if you had direct questions, more than happy to answer them.
Councilwoman James?
Thank you, no questions.
Councilwoman Gutierrez?
Nope, thank you.
Councilwoman Wells?
Thank you, Jeremy.
And Councilman Mears?
Sure.
No worries, thank you all.
So next, we have the presentation on the pedestrian bridge.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager. How are you all today?
Good. How are you? Great.
Thank you for letting me address you all today. My name is Savan Irons Kumasa. I'm the principal planner here with the Planning and Community Development Department. Today, we have a representative from Kimley Horn, Mike Lobdell, who will be doing a presentation regarding the feasibility study for the pedestrian bridge. The draft report is completed and is currently in review with ARC, so Mike is going to provide you some additional insight as far as where we are today. So, Mike, the floor is yours.
Hello, Mayor and Council. As Savan said, I'm Mike Lobdell with Kimley Horn. I'm the project manager on this and I really appreciate the opportunity. This is a lot of neat stuff going on in this area and it's fun as an engineer to be part of it and, you know, working on an asset for the city. Oh, that's touchy. I remember that. Okay. So the purpose of this study, it was a grant awarded by the Atlanta Regional Commission to determine the feasibility of a pedestrian bridge over the Norfolk Southern Railroad and Forest Parkway. Looking at different engineering and design considerations as to what would be the constraints, you know? We're going over a railroad. They certainly have criteria that we have to meet going over a state route, Forest Parkway, that's talking with GDOT and what requirements that they have. And also there's Georgia power lines and other utilities in the area. But on top of that, also with everything going on in the city, making sure that this ties in with the different initiatives that you guys are taking on. Not yet. Sorry about that. Okay. But also, you know, discuss with the city, who are the key stakeholders that would be concerned about this pedestrian bridge and the citizens at large? So engaging those stakeholders, engaging the public and hearing from them and what they're looking for here in downtown Forest Park. Looking into the key features of the bridge, sort of like the dimensions, what the bridge will look like, and at the end, wrapping up with a cost estimate and a schedule it'll take to implement. So the plan we have for working through this, we studied the existing conditions. We got feet on the ground, looking at the difference in elevation. Main Street is higher than the railroad tracks, which is higher than Forest Park. So there's when trying to meet something that pedestrians can actually use, particularly those mobility concerns, that looking at those elevations become very critical. Also looking at different planning efforts that the city and other stakeholders in the area have taken. Once we identified those stakeholders with the city, we interviewed those stakeholders individually so that we could really spend time getting down and understanding what it was, their particular, we'll say, stake in the game. With that information, we did do an initial layout of the bridge that met the criteria that particularly that Norfolk Southern and GDOT would want to see in something like this. And then we gathered the stakeholders here, actually here at City Hall in May to discuss that and kind of went over some of those specifics to try and come up with a vision for this bridge. With that, with that vision for the bridge, we did go out to the public and, you know, sought additional input. And now we're at the point of, you know, we're wrapping up those final deliverables and ready to close it out. So the previous planning efforts here, the city's done some comprehensive plans. It went in 2018 with an update in 2023. And pedestrian safety and walkability here in the area was definitely a key feature that came up in that comprehensive plan. And the pedestrian bridge and the need to study it was brought up in those plans. The Airtropolis Alliance and the CID also commissioned a study for doing a greenway plan for the Southern Crescent communities here, kind of in the airport area, for trails and other bike and pedestrian facilities connecting for an overall network in the area. From that sprung the Model Mile initiative, so they chose seven demonstration projects from one that was from each one of the communities in that Arrow ATL Plan. And the one in Forest Park did include one that goes from the elementary school across Forest Parkway to Main Street. And there's another one, it's not the Model Mile one, but that's in the plan to, that parallels Forest Parkway connecting the farmer's market and the Fort Gillum area. So a lot of initiatives for improving bike and pedestrian facilities here. And lastly, there's also the Liveable Centers Initiative done, and again, improving that walkability within the city of Forest Park is a key element that shook out of that plan. So working with Savan and her staff, we identified some of the key stakeholders that we needed to speak with. MARTA is looking at doing a bus rapid transit route that connects the East Point MARTA Station down to Lovejoy and goes along Forest Parkway and includes a bus rapid transit station, basically right here in front of City Hall is kind of the area they're looking at. So we want to know what they were looking at, what they needed for a station so that they, a pedestrian bridge would complement it, it'd make it very, they would work together. We didn't want them working against each other, having to undo work that was done. Clayton County DOT, that's of course any sort of infrastructure here in Clayton County, we need to speak with the county partners. Georgia DOT because of Forest Parkway in particular, but anticipating any pedestrian bridge would need federal funding and that would be funded through Georgia Department of Transportation. Airtropolis Alliance and the ATL Airport CID's, they're the ones who commissioned the greenway plan and they certainly have a lot of, a lot at stake here in the area. Georgia Power because we have to get around those lines one way or another, and some local business owners. We spoke with all of them individually. As I mentioned, after we spoke with them, we did have a visioning session here in May. And a look, you know, one was looking at the layout of the bridge, was touchdown, how's it going to work with the city center plan right there at Lake Drive? Yeah, how are we going to touchdown particularly around Main Street because that interaction between Main Street and the pedestrian bridge, we felt was very key to the success of the project. But also it had various, we'll say, aesthetic themes we brought to the visioning session to get a feel for what it was the stakeholders would like to see in a pedestrian bridge so that it's not just a piece of infrastructure, but it's also a landmark for the city and a feature to that as that as well. So with that, you know, we refined it. We have, did develop the bridge rendering. Our first public engagement event was the Fun Friday in July, our food truck event at Billy Park and got, I think, some pretty good input there. Met several citizens and got to present the rendering at that point. In August, we had here in City Hall, a public information open house. At both, both of those events, we did have interpreters for Spanish and Vietnamese to make sure those that do reside in Forest Park, if English is not their first language, we at least have a way of communicating and presenting the project and getting their feedback. Also throughout this time, we did a lot of online engagement, working with your information officer to get a project website up, also push things out through social media and for bang for the buck and reaching out to getting a lot of eyes on this project. The online engagement was great and I was really pleased with that. Reaching and told, you can see almost 1,200 unique visitors seeing the site and being able to see what the city is proposing here in downtown, but also getting survey results and feedback that way. It was, I was really pleased with that. So the, so for the, this is the aerial view of how the bridge would lay out. This gray area right here is the proposed city center that would actually take, cutting off Lake Drive, and that's, I know precision planning is doing that effort for you. So we did get their CAD work so that makes sure we're tying in directly with what they were drawing. So the south end of the bridge that we're proposing, the stairwell and the elevator tower would be right here. This is the parking lot for City Hall today. So this is right there at that driveway where it's coming off of Forest Parkway. It goes across Forest Parkway, touches down with another elevator on the north side of Forest Parkway. This way you have, where you have the proposed bus rapid transit stations, you have an elevator connecting both of them so that it's very easy for those using transit to get to this area. From there, we were taking an angle over towards that city-owned property there at the corner of Lake Drive and Main Street. And here, again, needing to meet the Americans with Disabilities Act, you can only have a 5% grade, which means going from, at this point, it's about 24 feet in the air, having to go down, you end up having to extend that length that the pedestrian has to walk to get that so that somebody in a wheelchair or someone who walks or someone who doesn't move very well is able to do that. Though we do include stairs though for the shorter route over here. Some of the things that have to be looked at for this is, one, any sort of the bridge fixed things on the, you know, such as the stairwell or columns, need to be a certain distance from the roadway, Forest Parkway, that's something that GDOT does require. But we put them beyond the sidewalk as well, keeping that area clear. Giving away my big reveal here. Sorry, guys. But also with the Norfolk Southern Railroad, it's common for railroads, whenever you're doing a bridge over the railroad, they want you to provide width that includes room for an additional track on either side of the existing track. Beyond that, if your column is going to be within, I forget the exact numbers, around 26 feet of the railway, they want a crash wall, which is, you know, a nice term for really a big hunk of concrete. That doesn't have the aesthetic features you have one in a bridge. So with that, we set our clear distance over the railroad that allows for a future track on either side of the existing rail line that's also outside the requirement for that crash wall, so that's not something that needs to be constructed. So that's not, you know, putting the time and effort and resources into building a bridge that has, we'll say, some landmark and aesthetic features to it and then adding a big hunk of concrete to it, didn't feel right. So we wanted to span that so that wouldn't be a requirement from Norfolk Southern. So, then my big reveal. So the, taking some of the feedback we got in the visioning session, you know, we were told something, wanted something that was kind of, had a modern feel to it. So that's what we're going with the, with the kind of the ribbing underneath the bridge and really put the focus of the aesthetics on the side of the span that goes over the Forest Parkway. The portion over the railroad is kind of out of the eyes of the drivers and the pedestrians. So really, but the focus needs to be the portion over Forest Parkway itself. But also with the elevator towers, does give you an opportunity to do something that's kind of adds a feature. We're showing a kind of a clock tower, one facing one direction of Forest Parkway, one facing the other. Doesn't have to be a clock tower, it could be, it could be the seal of Forest Park. You know, I know, Mayor, you were talking about maybe having the, putting the city of Forest Park or something on the bridge itself. That is something that is certainly an option as well as part of the final product. But some of the features, we'll say the vertical features that we had to consider, anything over the, over Forest Parkway has to be at least 17 and a half feet over the any part where a car could drive. So if an oversized truck can get underneath it without striking the bridge, the railroad has a requirement of 23 and a half feet over the top of the rail because they want to have any bridge they're going under, they want to be able to double stack the containers that, so that, that became kind of the controlling vertical element of the bridge. Yeah, that, do want to, one thing I did forget to mention, on the walkway over here, it's got these triangles that are kind of between the walkways. That is something that could be landscaped, it could be public arc be put in there, that's something to, we'll say, green up or another community feature that could be added to this, to this bridge. The, our discussions with Georgia Power, they agreed that the power lines could be buried through here, which is, would need to be done because we can't go over the power lines and ever get that bridge down, it'd be too far up in the air. So burying the power lines was one of the, is one of the proposals we have in our final study. So for project cost, the preliminary engineering, assuming that this is a federally funded project that includes the survey, the engineering, the environmental documentation.
You could get in here.
I was just getting going. So the, but also because this has elevators and things like that, it's not a typical roadway project, so it does have, would require electrical and mechanical engineers as well. Utility relocation, there's that cost that Georgia Power would put on the city to do the burial. The, fortunately, most of the property in this area is either public right of way or is owned by the city, so there's not a whole lot of, as far as right of way and easements, but some would be required from the railroad. And then the construction costs, and that was allowing for aesthetic elements to be added to the, to the structure, again, going for that, that community landmark portion. So if the city does want to pursue this pedestrian bridge, the next steps are finding that funding. There are competitive grants that are available through the bipartisan infrastructure law that are advertised periodically. And there are certainly elements of this, the project that would be inviting to some of those grants. But also the Atlanta Regional Commission has their call for projects. That's about every two years and the study was funded by Atlanta Regional Commission. Having this feasibility study done with the public engagement that went out with it does help, is favorable when pursuing that next phase with the Atlanta Regional Commission. That concludes my report, my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions or...
Thank you so much. Councilwoman James.
No questions. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
I guess my question is around, so with, could we ask the railroad for money to help us pay for this? Is there always parking their thing right there, blocking the road?
Well, I mean, you can always ask. The railroad, the railroads have a lot of sway. They're, they can, they can push around even GDOT, so...
For Mayor Butler, if you will, Councilman Gutierrez, we have engaged Norfolk Southern. In fact, we've had a meeting with Norfolk Southern and they have advised that they do have funding for projects such as these. I believe we missed the deadline for this year, Mr. Shelby, based upon the call that we had, but we have been in constant communication with them as well as, based upon your inquiry a few weeks back, we put that as the reason that we need this pedestrian bridge, just to ensure that our kids are not trying to cross over the bridge because it's blocking all of the intersections on Lake and Ash.
There is, one of the ones, one of the grants that's advertised periodically is crossing elimination grant, and I know we discussed that at one point. Unfortunately, not really looking, unless you were looking to close the Lake Drive crossing, it wasn't very competitive for that particular grant, but there's some other community connection grants that can be.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wells.
Oh, thank you so much.
Councilman Mears.
Yes, what kind of lighting is going to be? I'm sure you're going to have some kind of indirect lighting or something under the length of the bridge or is it going to be?
I mean, that, the details are not, we're not part of this study, but certainly, and it's, go back to that a little bit, it's certainly something that the, these elements underneath would be very well positioned where you can put uplighting, it can change. It could be something like the, I like the city's color scheme on the, on the seal, something like that, would certainly be a perfect spot for it.
My question is, and has the discussion...
My question is, and has the discussion with Norfolk Southern on the easement, has that already begun?
No, ma'am.
No, no, that's something, any sort of, particularly with federal funding, that's something you want to be careful that you get, it does, any discussion on it right of way does not want to get ahead of the environmental documentation because that will threaten, it will jeopardize your federal funding, so that's.
So in the event that it's not granted, what does that mean for the project?
That a grant does not?
That the easement is not granted, does that halt the project at all, or is there a workaround?
I mean, there's, there's ways of condemning that the railroads are very tough from that respect. Though I would say that pulling, pulling people off using the, crossing the railroad at grade is something the railroads are generally trying to do more of. And this is in line with what they're showing in their, their Public Projects Manual. That's, you know, a lot of where I've, I've used to get that, that's, that's the only guidance they gave me when I, I contacted them was, go to our project, our Public Projects Manual, so.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate your excitement for the, the bridge. Thank you, it's needed.
Yeah.
It's the Rome, I don't know if you read the Rome, but if you turn around, it's a snooze fest. I'm just playing, great job, I'm just kidding. Make it feel welcome.
All right, we're going, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The consent agenda for tonight, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
That was Councilwoman Wells, is there any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
All right, thank you, new business, council approval on a partnership with Clayton State for continuing and professional education. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
That was Councilwoman Wells, is there any discussion?
Mayor Butler, could you please have whomever was the maker of this motion to authorize city manager to amend the ARPA budget when necessary to effectuate this, the intent of this item?
Item six.
Clayton State.
All right, that was Councilwoman James.
So I amend the motion as city manager stated.
Second.
All right, now second by Councilwoman Wells. Any discussion with the new additions? All right, Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
All right, thank you, council approval. Is stated on here for a two-year extension, but I believe the conversation stemmed around a one-year extension with an automatic renewal for one year. And so I'm going to leave that open for someone to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we extend it for one year with an automatic renewal.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Now it's Councilman Mears, is there any discussion?
That's now Mayor Butler, the governing body asked us to provide all of you with some numbers. And for Max Air, the last check we cut was $497, according to our setting, it was all the way back in 2022. And for the plum and shop, we've expended a total of $17,135 since March 2024 until now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rainey, real call please.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
All right, thank you, the next item. Council approval of the comprehensive classification analysis and compensation study, which would include beginning January 1st to bring the minimum to $23.46 and for the time and position at two percent.
Put on order.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are we keeping it January the first, or are we saving if it can be done before then? Let it be done before then versus putting a date on it? That's what I thought we discussed.
Okay, well, that's where we could have this conversation, because I thought it was if we're doing the holiday pay, to leave it at January. This is where we need you guys to chime in.
So I would just make a motion that we approve it for the staff to get as soon as possible without a, a date. If they get it done in December, they get it done in December.
That's second.
If they get it done in January, they get it done in.
All right. So, the motion would be to authorize staff to begin the work on the implement, implementation of the classification and analysis and compensation study to begin no later than January 1st, to bring the minimum starting salary to $23.46 and to include the time and position at two percent.
Mayor Butler, just one final one, authorize the city manager to amend the budget to reflect said changes or whatever amount of money that's going to end up being.
All right, you guys heard the motion.
So moved, so moved.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second? By Councilwoman Wells, is there any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
All right, and the last item, is there a motion to authorize staff to appropriate funds not to exceed $1,000, was it for full-time and then $500 for part-time? For holiday pay bonus for employees who, but we didn't set a date.
My recommendation would be either September 1 or October 1, unless.
That's for employees who have started on it before that date.
Mayor, if I may, so you could authorize the city manager to determine that at a later time, if you wanted to take additional time to set the parameters. And then the motion would be to authorize, you know, employee bonuses not to exceed $1,000. So if you wanted to, to make a proration or something depending on the start date.
So is there a motion to authorize the holiday pay for $1,000 for full-time and $500 for part-time employees?
So moved.
Now it's Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
Now it's Councilman Mears, is there any discussion?
Mayor Butler, just one final thing, just authorizing us to use ARPA funds.
And the use of ARPA funds, all right.
So I rescind my motion and make that motion to use, to use ARPA funds.
All right, second?
Yes. Yes, it's getting late.
All right, Ms. Rainey?
Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, closing comments by the governing body. Councilwoman James?
November the 2nd, which is Saturday, I will be hosting along with the Cluster of Schools, the Business Breakfast. It's going to be from 9:30 to 11 at Forest Park High School, and we will also have a fall event that will include entertainment from 9 to 3. So we will be putting the information out to ask businesses to come and partner with our schools. Also want to thank everyone that came out for the award meeting, I was not able to be there, I was under the weather. Thanks Mayor Butler for stepping in, she did a wonderful job. I have to put the information out on the website and it should be, well, Ms. Dixon or, or someone, staff will put the information out on the website as soon as I send it to them, but I really appreciate you all. Our directors, our staff, our employees, you all really make us look really well in our city with the things that you all do. So we want to really, really say that we're grateful to you. And I think that just the will of the council to make sure that you all have salary, have money, have increase, have whatever, the LEAF program that Mayor initiated with the, being able to have, you know, flex time and comp time, whatever you want to call it. I just want to say, we thank you, we appreciate you, and we, it's an honor to work with the residents here in the city of Forest Park. So please make sure you reach out to me if I can help you with some things. Thank you, Mr. Call, I think I got to go around and drive around your, your, your street and see your new porch. But we are excited that we were able to do the home program, so thank you all for everything.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Thank you everybody again, like, to echo my colleague sentiments, it's, y'all make it easier to be up here. We have extremely competent staff that, you know, put in their best every day, so really proud that we were able to give you all, you know, the adequate pay that you deserve. And just, you know, continue doing what you do and treating our people the best way as possible. I really am excited about the customer service focus. Also, you know, we on purpose today messed up with PowerPoint and Excel, so y'all can see that the training is coming. So we have some volunteers for that. So then Friday, we're going to be having a, in Ward 3 over there on Jonesboro Road, across the Auto Zone, a like trick-or-treat event, we're going to be showing a movie, Director Maxwell and Director Walker will be wearing wigs. We're dressing up for Halloween, so make sure y'all join us, we'll be watching a movie and just, you know, enjoying community. Thank you everybody so much, and anything I can do to help you, please reach out. And I'm sorry, Big Mike, great job on the bridge presentation, I don't know if he's out.
Yes, um, um, to our employees, to piggyback off of what the other council member said, just thank you for choosing the city of Forest Park. Like Councilman said, we, you know, we're up here and we're making decisions, but you all actually make us look good. You make our community look good, and you come here and you give your all, you're away from your families, and you take care of us. So I just feel like you deserve to be taken care of as well, so thank you for all of your hard work. I also want to thank our city manager, just for being who you are. You know, you're one of the hardest working city managers that I've had the pleasure of working with. Not only are you here and active, but you're actually in our community, and that's what leadership is about. So I just want to say thank you for everything, and I don't think this raise for our employees would have been so soon if you weren't here because we've talked about it, but you helped us to push it forward, so I really appreciate you for that. Ms. Waria, like, it feels so good for our residents to get up here and talk about the home improvement program and the grant and the things that are being done to their home. And I know you play a huge part in that, I know you've been, some said, you had some choice words said to you. And you've taken it and rolled with it, and just thank you for everything that you contribute to our community. And I think that is it. Oh, if we can make sure before our meeting starts, because I was getting messages that the people that are online viewing can't hear, if we could just make sure that we test the system before we actually start the meeting so that we don't have those issues, because we are handling the city's business and the people need to know and hear what we're handling. So if we can do that, that would be great. And also want to let the people know, I didn't hear the trunk-or-treat that the police department is doing on October the 31st. So make sure you all come out, I heard they're doing some big things, I will be there, I hope to see you all there too. Thank you and have a good night.
Councilwoman Mears?
Well, I too want to echo the increase that we've hope helps the employees, they well deserve it. We have a good bunch of employees in the city, all of us, all of you. And I thank you well deserving of it, and we'll get it going as fast as possible. But I, I had a comment about Mr. Finch, but he's back there, he's here. Always got to bring Willie into it, but sometime between now and spring, I want to get with our city manager. And it was brought to our attention about the sidewalks and streets and different things. And see who is in charge of that, other than, it's not all Forest Park's responsibility. And see if we can't get some help with the sidewalks and stuff. There's a lot, a lot of sidewalks in Forest Park that needs addressing, and we need to look into that and streets paving and potholes and things of that nature. So we'll work diligently on that in the coming months, thank you.
All right, thank you all so much for coming, I look forward to seeing you. November, right? All right, so we do have executive session items to discuss, so I'm going to ask for a motion to recess and enter into executive session for personnel litigation, real estate, or legal matters.
So moved.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
That was Councilman Mears, all in favor?
I didn't know it made doors.
With your events coordinator, or can I get like? With your events coordinator or can I get like?
Is there a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene into a regular?
So move.
Okay, that was Councilwoman James, the second by Councilman Mears, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now is there a motion to approve the general release and indemnification agreement regarding four two one web drive?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James, their second. That was Councilman Mears, is there any discussion? Uh, Ms. Rainey?
Uh, Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Councilmember Good T S? Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
For the record, Mike's presentation was...